I call this regular city council meeting to order at 6:00 PM on September 23rd, 2024. We do have a full quarrel and is brother Fitzpatrick here?
He's not.
Not? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Complete it.
Thank you. John May and Wilson will lead us in a quick prayer. Loving Father, as always, we ask for wisdom. We give thanks for the privilege of serving this community, the privilege of living in this community, and for the freedoms that we enjoy. And we give thanks for those that made them possible and continue to. For as we go through tonight, may your spirit prevail in all that we say and do. We ask it in your name. Amen. We remain standing. We'll send a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the heart of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Item number five is citizens' public comments. Persons who desire to address the City of Hondo City Council will be received at this time. Those persons wishing to speak should complete a public comment form and submit it to the City Secretary prior to the meeting. Speaker wishes to comment on a particular agenda item, then the speaker should indicate such items on the form. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Speakers conduct them so that they're in a civil manner. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City of Hondo City Council cannot deliberate or take action on items that are not listed on the meeting agenda. We do have one who has signed up to speak tonight, Ms. Floristella Gonzalez. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Floristella Gonzalez. I live at 1002 Avenue S., Hondo, Texas. I'm a lifelong citizen here in Hondo. I wanted to, I came up a few months ago bringing it up about the animal advisory board. And I'm here again, maybe six months later or so. I want to know if it got dissolved and who dissolved it because I was looking in the Texas Safety and Health. It says that the governing body of a county or municipality in which an animal shelter is located shall appoint an advisory committee to assist in complying with the requirements of this chapter. The advisory committee must be composed of at least one licensed veterinarian, one county or municipal official, one person who, whose duties include the daily operation of an animal shelter, and one representative from an animal welfare organization. The advisory committee shall at least, meet at least three times a year. To by best of my knowledge, I haven't heard that there's been one, probably going on two years. So the city's functioning a shelter without an, without an animal advisory board, which I think is very important. And also I wanted to say about the animal shelter that I've been involved for more than 25 years. I'm a strong animal advocate and I've gone to the animal shelter and I was never required to set up an appointment to go visit the shelter, which now I have been told that I need an appointment. It's stringent rules that are being set and I don't know by who or what to think. I feel sometimes I'm being singled out, which I am the one has done a lot for the animals, been involved with the shelter and like I said, a strong advocate. And from what I hear, even our vet from Hondo hasn't been reappointed anymore after his term was over, which you need a vet from Hondo, from the city. So that's what I heard. That's what I heard. And I think, again, I said, it's, I think it's very important and I don't know why I'm being treated this way at our city shelter when I thought it was open. It is a public facility and why I haven't, for over 25 years, again, I'll say I've never needed an appointment to go to the shelter or see the animals. I have gone through a lot. I used to go one time for one, I think I brought it up before, I saved a dog that was going to get electrocuted from chewing on an electrical cord and I reported it. One time the shelter's door was open, I reported it. They could have gone in there and stowed. I don't know how it got, the door was completely open. And in the past, like I said, there was three baby skunks. They're dead and they didn't even know about it. I let them know. An ACO in the past, there was a dead, a dead dog in the, in the sale in the kennel and they didn't even know I brought it up to their intention. I think it's important to have contact with the public to go to the city, to the city shelter and not being so restricted now. So thank you. That's, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Our next item is a consent agenda and it contains two items. Number six, consideration and approval to sell City of Hondo surplus equipment and seized vehicles awarded to Hondo Police Department. Number seven, consideration and approval of various appointments to boards and commissions. We've had these over the weekend. I would entertain a motion either to-
Shall move.
-to pass the consent agenda. I have a motion from Mr. Itarte and a second from Mr. Villa. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same side. I hear no. The consent agenda is approved. Under other business, item number eight, discuss and consider sporting events, fees, and seasonal programming in the City of Hondo. This is item number eight. We have some materials and, or we had some materials via email. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'm not sure what this item is about. I believe Mr. Itarte had some questions. I thought they were answered in the emails that were given. If you can provide me with the questions, Mr. Itarte, I can-
I'll give you a response. The email was generated after the concerns of some parents were aired. As the parents were not getting responded to. That's the only reason that I brought this issue up. I was not aware and I'm not making this up. That's, that's for darn sure. They were questioning the, the scheduling that they are experiencing. They cut out games. Even though the email says where they're still going to be playing playoff games, these parents want to play and get $55 worth out of their money for their children, mostly little girls, to play volleyball. And it's, I don't know if it's a one game, a one day or two day season, but you know, they're saying, the response from the city manager was that due to staffing, due to not having enough staff, enough refs, enough of whatever, that's why they cut down on the season. But they still kept the same price, which is a concern of some parents. So if they knew they were not going to meet the schedule of what they're used to, then they should consider cutting back on the fee. And they didn't. The parents want their little girls to experience volleyball or shortchanging their children. If you know you're not going to have enough referees, train some staff to be refs.
I believe there were some other considerations that were listed in the response, such as scheduling, things like that would-
Yes, the-
And more players too, but still, I mean, if it's, if it's a lesser value to the kids, maybe you do look at changing the cost.
There's, Counsel, there's, there were 85 kids last year. There's 126 this year. There were up to, if you won everything, if you went to the last game, there was six total games. This year there will be five. There's guaranteed five games.
Including playoffs, John?
Including playoffs. And there was, there was six games including playoffs last year. So there's a one game difference for a few. Again, that not everyone had six games last year. There is a $5 difference from the year before, keeping in mind that everything has went up, including officiating. Most of the costs, in fact, I'm going to say all of the costs goes towards, is a pass through. These kids receive jerseys from us, so they pay their $55. They receive jerseys. They receive a T-shirt at the end of the year, fairly nice jerseys. The, again, these, these games are meant to give everyone a solid base. The third and fourth graders wanted to have an opportunity to play and the rec said, okay, well, if everyone gets, you know, we get enough participation, we'll certainly give it a shot. So this year we've got third and fourth grade teams and we've got fifth and sixth grade teams. And so that's the difference. And I'm, I'm not sure, seeing as I have not responded to any of the parents directly, I guess it's, you know, I believe it's incorrect that you mentioned that, or maybe they got it wrong or didn't know who, who they were talking to, but no parent has received a direct response from me. There was an email sending out, sent out to coaches to clarify when we did receive questions from parents and from coaches. Actually, I believe it was one coach and I'm not even sure about the parents. The email was sent out. It was well received. And in fact, some of the coaches started talking about possibly creating a scrimmage that they could hold on a Saturday. We're, we're looking at scheduling.
When was the email sent? Because there's some parts that directly went to Mr. Joe. There were parts that went directly to your sports manager. And some of them got a response after this issue was brought up to you and, and, to you. And I guess somebody spoke to him. But whatever was generated, was generated after this was brought up, John. And, and, and I hate to be called a liar in public, but in so many words, that's what you're choosing to do. You're telling me that that email was sent before? BS.
Actually, Mr. Itarte, I'm saying that we, we had questions asked and we answered them. I'm not sure when the email was sent in comparison to where you got the information.
It needed to be brought up, Mayor, because the parents that were called, talking to or calling the sports manager, whatever title that he was given, he was not responding. They don't have to go to him every time that they have an issue and that's what he wants. Micromanage. That's what these managers are for, sir. The, the sports manager, if they have a problem with, with whatever sports in session, in season.
I'm, I'm, I need to be sure, and I think we all need to be sure. Are you concerned that the sports manager with the rec department did not respond?
Did not. Did not. And then they were asking questions about the price and in so many words, well, you know, it, it, that's the way it's going to be. No wrong.
My other concern is I have not heard anything tonight or I've been caught on some of the emails, which would indicate someone doubting your word.
Well, you know, we can discuss that at another date. I do have one of my colleagues as a witness, if you want to meet at another date. That's not for discussion here.
Yeah, we're talking about the, the fees and the events and the seasonal programming.
I mean, if parents are concerned that they're, they're not getting enough playing time, maybe we need to consider not inviting other towns.
Yeah. I mean, yeah. My, my main concern is a three game season with a couple playoff games. I mean, like I'd be irritated if, if baseball went to that or basketball went to that.
Well, there's a one game difference from-
Yeah, I mean, then last year it wasn't, that wasn't good. I mean, I, my daughters played volleyball there. I feel like it was more than, more than three games and a couple playoff games. So I think we need to, if we're going to, if we're going to provide the service, we need to do it right or not do it at all and let, and let somebody private take over.
Just to be clear, do we have participants from the Henderson Sabanal?
That is correct.
And where?
And Utopia.
And Utopia.
Which, and you hate to, you hate to, you hate to, you know, cut them out of that, but same time though, we, we need to have, you know, we need to have a good product for the people that pay. And I mean, $55 isn't a lot. I know there's a sunk cost in the jersey and, and those things, but you know, for three games, I mean, that's, that's a low, and you know, with a couple playoff games, right? But three games of the regular season is really low.
I mean, I think it's a good idea going out and bringing in different towns because that's how they grow. I mean, they'll do eventually, but it's going to cut games and maybe.
It, basically it's, we, we, we don't fail the plan. We planned, we don't, poor planning and we failed at planning, which we don't plan to fail. It, it just happened. But we not make, we, we made no attempt to adjust. None.
Actually, Mr. Itarte, I think our staff did an excellent job. I think they do a good enough job that people from other cities recognize that and are coming to play here. And I think considering how many personnel we have and how many people we have in this program, they did an excellent job trying to keep it fair, which is what they did, which is what they did. And yes, there may be one less game, but our third and fourth grade girls are going to get the opportunity to play this year, which is exciting for them. Again, they'll get those basics so that they can become better and eventually represent Hondo in high school. So I think the rec department is doing everything they can and, you know, I, I disagree with your statement.
Mayor, let's move on. Those communities come to Hondo because they have no rec center, period. But let's move on. Hopefully they'll do a better job as, as the program grows and it's going to grow.
And what I, I just want to clarify, the concern that I'm hearing most often is we want more games.
Yes.
Of course.
Correct. From the parents.
Of course. I mean, if, you know, and they're, they're, the parents are considering the amount that they're paying. Last year it was five games and then playoffs. The year before, the same thing. He's got kids. I've got grandkids.
So last year they played-
So we just have to-
This year they'll play between five and six games.
I'm sorry. Say it again.
So last year they played between five and seven games total. I mean, I know, I know you've tried. Seriously, I'm not doubting you. My only, my only thing is if Hondo parents are upset, then maybe we need to pull the other towns out and give more playing, I mean, something we can reconsider, just playing Hondo kids.
Might be hard to do that this season.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, no, you don't do it, you don't do it this season. It's already is what it is.
Any, any other comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then, item number nine, discuss and consider action on amending the future city council dates that conflict with the holiday schedule. I believe this has to do with Veterans Day.
Yes, sir. Veterans Day falls on a Monday. Mayor brought it to my attention and is this, do we want to consider moving the council meeting Tuesday, Mayor? That Tuesday, the 12th?
I think that's a consideration.
What day, what day is Veterans Day?
The 11th.
It's a Monday, November the 11th.
Oh, November the 11th.
Yeah, and, and we, that is our holiday.
It's fine with me.
We have in years past, sometimes moved meetings when they fell on holiday or some of the council.
I'm all for it, but just to make sure, was it not, was that, not that holiday taken off the list of holidays that we wanted to honor our employees? I mean, just for here?
I don't think so.
Has that always been a holiday here?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Well, is it, is it a holiday on the, on the, on the, on the, on the 9th? No, I'm sorry.
On the 11th.
Is it, is it one that we approved?
Uh, I'm not sure off the top of my head, guys. One moment.
It was removed off our approval list.
Well, we haven't, we haven't approved another list of holiday. I mean, it should be the same.
We just added, added the floating day and then the-
And then Christmas Eve.
Right.
That should have been the only change. So if it was a holiday, I mean, we, even if it's not a holiday, we may still consider that because people have, they may want to celebrate Veterans Day that evening. So I mean, I mean, that's-
I think it should be a holiday.
It's before five. All the celebrations and that too. The last one's at two.
Okay. The glories are going to be off that day, right?
That's what we don't know about.
That's what I'm not sure about.
So if, if, if they're-
No, it was removed off the list.
Like we've discussed the holiday thing numerous times.
Yes.
And so there's a lot of holidays that a lot of us may think we should have, but we have to limit.
If I'm mistaken, particularly it was removed off the list.
Well, it wasn't, we didn't approve any list, right? So the only, the only thing that we, that we talked about doing was, was a floating holiday and, and Christmas Eve being a full day.
Right.
That's it. So if it wasn't a holiday before then, you know, then it's, then it's not a holiday now.
I see some staff checking records.
I mean, that's, we should have a set, we should have set holidays. So there's no confusion, huh? Well, but he's talked about doing them annually, like setting them with the budget every year, which I don't agree with, but.
Yeah, that's a, that's a holiday. At least it was in 2023 and since we made no changes, I believe it is in 2024 as well.
So it is, it is a, it is a staff holiday.
Correct.
So the question comes then, Counsel, do we want to meet on Monday night, November the 11th, which is Veterans Day, which is a staff holiday? Or do we want to move that meeting to Tuesday, the 12th?
I'm fine moving it because of the staff that has to attend, that has to attend the meeting.
Yeah.
We should, that's really a holiday.
I would entertain a motion to move that.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Villa, and I take second from Ms. Ramirez, to move the Monday, November 11th city council meeting to Tuesday, November 12th. Any further discussion?
No.
No. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same side? Thank you. The motion carries. Item number 10, discuss and consider action on replacing water department vagtron. Mr. Mayor.
All right. So I'm looking through my, uh, deal here. One moment. So the, currently the water department has two vag, vagtrons. Basically these, these are used in order to fix water leaks and, and other situations. Right now currently, one, they're both getting old. One of them is at the point to where we're spending around 25K a year for maintenance on it. So it, it is time to go ahead and, and get a new one. You know, as we've talked about in, through emails, I mean, leaks are obviously an issue here. We have 60 leaks, 50 to 60 leaks a month here, month here that the staff are repairing. So they need the, all the equipment they can get to, to keep ahead. And we would use the fund balance to, for this particular truck or for this particular trailer.
John, we just approved the budget. If, if everybody knew that we needed something like this and we had all these repairs, why wasn't it put on the budget?
It was removed off the, it was removed from the I want list. That's why it was not in our budget.
So we, from my understanding, it recently broke down again. We've had issues with the water pump. You know, we had sent it and got it fully repaired and it was kind of the last straw.
And I would remind us that, you know, our budget numbers usually are put together like in June at the latest. And you also, you say it broke down again in August or?
Uh, it broke down recently. It's, it's been in and out of the shop from my understanding. And Jerry, we, again, when we're assessing the, you know, obviously having trouble with leaks, we're assessing it and this is one of the things that staff brought up, hey, we really need to get something that we can depend on and it's not going to be breaking down so that we can continue to address these leaks.
Yeah, John, that's, that's what I'm saying. We know, we know we've had all these water leaks from, let's just say the beginning of the year and not to have this on the, for us to prove it up. We just approved the budget. Why wasn't this put in the budget?
Yes, sir. Now, I, I understand.
And, and the other question that I would have is we're considering replacing it. Is this something we can do through buy board or is this something we're going to have to bid and Mr. Science?
Absolutely. If I can go back, um, we try to maintain equipment as much as we can. Both vector trailers have been here. One has been here since 2014. The other one is 2018, I believe. So before I got here, before, you know, Jeremiah was here. So it's an old piece of equipment and we've been trying to work with it. Unfortunately now they're both down.
Okay. How long have you been trying to do repairs and do this?
Well, it, it, for some time, you know, we try to repair and-
That's what I'm saying. If we've had problems with these for months, why wasn't it put on the budget?
It wasn't a big problem before because we were taking care of it. We were maintaining it. Now, because of the age, now it's breaking down more than what we thought, but it was on the-
The age, the age today and the age six months ago still-
Correct. And it was on the wish list as Mr. Porter said.
Johnny, unfortunately I, I have to agree with the city manager. They just got it out of the shop. It is a new pump. Some back door needs to be replaced. It leaks more than it siphons. I saw it today myself.
I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning the fact that if we had all these problems with them, why wasn't it put on the budget?
There were some cut, Johnny, you know, you know, and all of us up here know that there were some cutbacks initiated by the city manager from our budget. Unfortunately that one got the ax. Fast forward, now we need it to keep up with the leaks. That way they won't get so many emails from me. And then he responds in an ugly way to me, but with the new equipment, it'll cut back on my emails because there's a hell of a lot of leaks around here that people are complaining and our staff, and they do a hell of a job. Your water department is the hardest working department you got this year. They can't keep up, Johnny.
Oh, I understand that. I'm not questioning that.
Let's get them the equipment that they need.
I'm not questioning that.
So Johnny, I'll, I'll, I'll take that and say that yes, it should have been on the budget. I apologize and we'll, we'll do better when we do the budget next year.
So do we need a budget amendment?
Yes, sir. We'll bring back a budget amendment during the, uh, the middle of the year, basically when we-
So back to my question.
Yes, sir.
And do, because we don't have the information here. Do we have an anticipated cost and the funding would come from what?
Yes, sir. The funding would come from the water fund balance. We've got a quote of $98,236.75 and this is a buy board quote.
And, and, and I'm sorry, the cost for it is?
Uh, $98,236.75.
Which can easily be covered by our-
By our fund balance. We've got a 280 days in the water fund balance currently.
So the anticipated action tonight is to approve the purchase?
Yes, sir.
There's not motion on it.
Negotiate and purchase of a vag truck not to exceed-
A vag trailer.
Vag trailer.
I wish I had a vag truck. And just so that you understand.
How soon would we get it? How soon would we get it?
That, that trailer is sitting at the, at the company Vermeer that sells those trailers. So if we- trailers. So if we get the budget amendment and we approve it, we can have it ASAP. And the, the figure again is ninety-eight, what?
Two thirty-six and seventy-five cents.
So our motion would be to approve the purchase of a vag trailer for not more than ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-six and seventy-five. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, I have a motion from Mr. And I have a motion from Mr. Williams and a second from Ms. Ramirez. Any further discussion?
So the, the budget amendment's going to come next, next meeting?
Uh, no, sir. It'll come with the, uh, either quarterly or.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir. Whenever, uh.
Whenever we do them all at the same time. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Makes sense.
Do we need to include in tonight's motion that it's coming from the balance? Or would we do that at a?
That's, no, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
No, that's.
Got to be handled in the budget amendment.
All right. Any further discussion?
Can it be quarterly, the, the budget amendment report?
Say again, sir.
Can it be quarterly, the budget amendments?
Uh, if, uh, I mean, if council deems it so.
We've done them quarterly. We've done them more often than quarterly over the last twelve, fourteen years.
It should be at least quarterly.
Yeah.
Help us manage the budget.
Yeah. Any further discussion on this topic? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same side? I hear no opposition. Motion carries. I would take personal privilege at this point and encourage us to focus on our issues. In years past, we sometimes got into personal issues and we have enough to do without that. Uh, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
That's enough, Eddie.
Item number 11, executive session. City Council and City of Hondo may convene an executive session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551 dot point oh seven one, one A and two, consultations with attorney, and Section 551 point oh seven two, deliberations about real property. We have one item which is to discuss a, uh, real property offer. We will enter executive session at 6:30 and council will retire to the annex and return. You're welcome to stay in the air conditioning. We'll be back.